I'm so happy of the occasion and situation we find ourselves in. We are in a situation with this coronavirus to do something differently. But nevertheless, I know we will overcome this through our diligence, with our discipline, with our compliance with the directives that our leaders have given us, and also the restrictions that have been imposed upon us as well. Today, I'm going to speak briefly on a few topics such as the coronavirus epidemic, which has consumed us in every waking moment. It seems like every time we wake up, you know, there's something on the TV concerning this virus. And also, I'm going to speak about humanitarian effort, what we are doing to combat this situation, and how we are, what we call sheltering in place and practicing our social distances. Now, as I begin to talk about the Coastal Health District, they just sent out last night an update as to where we are as far as how many people are positive in our district. And I will read and quote to you. Bryan County has 30 cases, and unfortunately, there are two deaths. Camden County has 22 cases. Chatham County has 157 cases with five deaths. Effingham County has 25 cases and one death. Glen County has 40 cases. I remember times when we didn't have but one or two. However, as we test more and more people, we knew that that figure would rise. Liberty County has 21 cases. Long County has two cases, and McIntosh has three cases. Now, it's just the way it is that we have these many cases, but we are doing all we can to make sure that we have adequate medical equipment for everyone if they test positive, so they be able to get a bed and be able to get the necessary medical attention that they need. Speaking of that, I would like to say I'm so proud of our medical personnel who are taking their time to, they're putting themselves in harm's way so they can help us as we combat this virus. It kind of reminds me of being in the military. In the military, we equip our soldiers to go out and fight. We equip our soldiers to be in combat. And our medical personnel are normally the people who are behind the line. They stay behind. Now, it seems to be on the other way, the other foot. It's reversed. Our medical personnel are in harm's way now. So we must always make sure that they have the necessary equipment so they can combat, and they will be safe as they help us as we go through this virus, this epidemic. To that end, the state of Georgia has set up a pipeline for cities and counties to receive more and more equipment. So all our medical facilities should be receiving all the equipment they need, the PPE equipment that they need to combat this situation. Our health services, our Coastal Health District Services offering COVID-19 screening and testing with no insurance needed. Now, we only have one testing site here in Glen County, but hopefully, as the governor said, there will be more added testing sites, and we're hoping that there will be one additional one be added here too in Glen County. Also, we own weekly calls to assess what's going on in our district, and also emergency management is available just as well. We have stood up our EOC, a virtual EOC, so therefore, everybody who, the same as with natural disasters, the hurricane, will come, all the ones who normally meet in the EOC, emergency office management, emergency operational management, excuse me, they are all on board with the conference, and they will, if need be, help us as we move forward. Dealing with public safety, the city of Brunswick issued Resolution Number 2020-06. It was a declaration of local emergency, and that was to let everybody know about social distancing. In other words, we decided to get out ahead of this thing. I often say I would rather be early with some of the information than late with all. We have to be very diligent and be out there ahead so we can make sure that this curve, so we can keep this curve down. We don't want to overwhelm our medical facilities, but we know that as we test more, there probably will be more people who will test positive. We also issued Resolution Number 2020-07, and it was really to, for temporary authorizing restaurants to sell beer and wine for consumption on premises and also for to-go. The goal was to ensure that our small businesses could stay open during this epidemic. At least we can have some sense of norming so people can actually be able to, they can be able to go to restaurants and get a to-go package or whatever, and also there, just in case they're not cooking at home. However, Resolution Number 2020-08, it calls for shelter in place. And shelter in place is something that we really want all our individuals to do. It's time out for the parties. It's time out for the celebrations and the social gatherings. We need to be very disciplined enough to stay at home unless you're going out to the grocery store, or going out for medical issues, going to the pharmacy, or maybe just going outside just to exercise, to get away from the monotony of it all. We have to do those things, shelter in place. We do not want to have the epidemic become a hotspot here in Glen County. We want people to understand that if you go out and you gather around, you run the risk of bringing it back home to your kids and your family, and then they run the risk of giving it to somebody else, and before too long, we are that hotspot. So therefore, we're asking people to shelter in place and do the things that we have all, we've asked you to do. I know it's kind of hard sometimes with the discipline, however, but this is something that we got to do. Our local emergency order also closed additional businesses, and we defined essential workers, extended all previous orders to expire on April 30. We extended it to April 30, so make sure that that will be it. Now, we may have to extend it even further as time goes on, but we will know as it goes on. The governor has issued the order, and we are supplementing his order. In other words, we are abiding to by his shelter in place order. To improve social distances, employee safety, and effective service to the community, we have closed City Hall except for you can call in and maybe we can provide some type of services. The EOC, as I said before, has provided, will provide virtual operations. However, we realize too that, you shelter in place, that this is something new for everyone. And there are sometimes complaints, rights, and sometimes people getting on each other nerves. So we ask for you to please, please be vigilant enough to know that. Please be careful. If you need to go outside, get some exercise, get some air, please do so. But we're not, we're asking you to not, to not do all the social gathering. Also, we have, also have, Matthew Hill, Downtown Development Authority, has provided on his website places where you can go for, provide assistance for employment. You can file for employment. You can, all those things are on the website. Also, on the website, you can go to the website of Operation, excuse me, go to coastalstrong, coastal.strong.com. That is a website that has been set up by Downtown Development Authority, by Economic Development Office of the city of Brunswick, also the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Authority. That website has been set up for them, for us to go, and there will be some information there given to them. As I talk about the humanitarian effort, we are so glad that there are organizations out there who are willing to help and help with all this situation, help people who are needing help. And I offer my thank you, sincere thank you to people who do that. My offer of sincere thank you to the food banks, to the grocery stores who are staying open for us, also to our mail carriers, our delivery personnel. I just think if they weren't delivering, where we would be. I'm so thankful for that. And I'm also thankful to all the nonprofits who are providing food for people who will find themselves in need of, under food banks. This is something that we really need, and I'm glad that people have stepped in, and it's showing me that this community is a community of giving. This community is a community that cares about their fellow citizens. It's such a great community to be in. Tonight would have been the city council meeting for the city of Brunswick, along with our Mayor Fortem Julie Martin, Commissioner Felicia Harris, Commissioner Johnny Kason, and Commissioner Vincent Williams. We extend all we can, offer assistance that we can, to help you in any way that you can. You can always reach us. Our numbers are available, and we will provide assistance. The city staff and also the county staff is also available for assistance. And we're so appreciative of the county getting out in front of things as well. This community really shows that we are very concerned about our citizens. So help us to help you stay sheltered in place. Practice social distancing. Practice that six feet. If the new buzzword can be, give me six feet. Now, make sure you wash your hands. Make sure you use sanitation. Make sure that you are, you wear your gloves, your mask. Do those things so we can curb this virus that's going around. Now, I'm going to take a few questions from Mr. Steagle. He would provide a couple of questions to me, and hopefully, I'll be able to answer those. And I tell you, it's not going to be the first time that we do this. We will continue this, what I would call a five-side chat, let people know where we are. We are doing very well here in Glen County, and what we want to keep it up. We don't want to just latch and think that, oh, it hasn't hit us yet, so it won't hit us. Please, I implore you to be very careful, be safe, and also I implore you to practice all the things that you need to do to be safe. Keep you and your family safe. Keep you and your fellow citizens safe by adhering to the standards that have been presented to by our governor and by our local ordinance. Mr. Steagle, you have any questions?
Yes, we do have a couple of questions. Like I said, our questions that we're going to have tonight are from the citizens here, business owners, Mr. Mayor, and citizens that are here in Brunswick. But one of the things I would like to ask you is because we're a small town and we're a small city, I know a lot of people think that our information is either secondhand or maybe we're having to depend on other places to get our information. You know, how can the citizens be sure that the city is getting timely and accurate COVID-19 information?
That's a good question, Mr. Steagle. I'll tell you, we get our information because I sit on a number of boards across the state. And also, we have Ms. Treese Hamilton, who is Coastal Area Action Authority. She sits on the Governor COVID-19 Advisory Task Force, which means she gets information firsthand, and she sends it out. Also, Family Connection sends out information. The Coastal Region, Coastal Health District, which I sit on as a director, sends out information. I get information twice a day, and I send it out to everybody and it's being distributed. The SBA District Director, Ms. Terri Dentson, an attorney for Hunter McLean, they send out updates. So it seems like we are always trying to get the information out to everybody so they can be aware of what's going on. As I stated before, we created coastalstrong.com, a website that will put all the community events and the community things that happen so it gets to everybody so everybody can understand what's going on. It is imperative that we get the information to you as quick as possible. We want to make sure that that happens. We know that you might be tired of listening to the news and getting fed up with what's happening on the news because it doesn't give very much good information. It's always giving sad information, so to speak. But to take a break from that, go online and look at our website, which will give great up-to-date information of what's going on.
And if I could, I would like to speak on that for a second. So that website again is coastal-strong.com. If you look in the chat box, if you're viewing this online, you'll be able to see, we actually put it in the chat box so everyone can see it. If there is anyone that's on the phone, it is coastal-strong.com. That was a great collaboration effort between our local chamber, Development Authority, Downtown Development Authority, and the City Economic Development Office. You know, Mr. Mayor, we just, we started to realize that there were so many different emails coming at people. I mean, from their banks, from just everywhere that's talking about COVID-19. And so, you know, it was a choice for us to say, hey, look, let's create one place where people can actually go, fill out their application with SBA, learn all the other resources from maybe UGA. And so we have a ton of information there. So please, coastal-strong.com. I know you talked about some of the resolutions that we put in place. Is there any other shelter in place extension from Governor Kemp besides the one that said, you know, the original one of April the 13th?
Well, yes, Steagle, there has been one other put out, and it's been extended to April 30. And the governor, as he said, that's a fluid date because as we move forward, we would see, you may have to extend that as well. But right now, everything goes to shelter in place, it goes to April 30. We've had people who have called us concerning that, but what we do now, what we do now is just have to wait until the governor, if he wants to extend that. And we'd extend it only if we find that it's necessary to extend it.
So April the 30th is the new date, and August the 13th is passed, doesn't mean that everybody run out in the streets and go against the social distancing, right?
Right. We need to be vigilant and stay in place because we're trying to curb this virus. And one of the main reasons is because we're trying to make sure our medical facility is not overwhelmed, overwhelmed with many, many cases of positive cases. But we know that, as I said before, the more people we test, that there will be more positive cases.
Okay, got it. And if I'm not mistaken, I think you said that number here was right at about 30?
Forty.
Forty? It was about 40 cases? Okay.
Forty cases, positive cases here in Glen County. What I tell you what, excuse me, what I tell you, we haven't shown that how many people have gotten over the virus. And that's something that we're asking the Health District to give us some figures. So hopefully, in my next address, I will be able to tell you how many people have gotten over the virus and moved forward. And we will keep stressing that to the Coastal Health District to get that information out to us as soon as possible.
Okay, perfect. So one of the things that I know that you and the commission are very heartfelt about is for everyone in our community to feel that they are needed, they're wanted, and that they are thought about. So, you know, in an emergency or in a disaster, it doesn't matter who you are, how much you're making. The city of Brunswick is like a family. And so I have a question for you. I'm fortunate enough to be in City Hall with some rock stars. Our interim city manager, Tenet Myers, our community development director, Dominique Mack, our planning director, John Hunter. Like I said, I'm fortunate enough to be in City Hall with these guys every day. They're superstars when it comes to, you know, being able to help plan and put things together. So with that said, what is the city doing regarding the homeless? I mean, that's just kind of a hot topic. We don't want anyone left out. But is there something that the city is doing regarding the homeless?
Well, Mr. Steagle, thank you for asking that question. And I know everybody here in the city of Brunswick is concerned about that. It seems that this is happening to, not only to the city of Brunswick, but happening to other cities as well. As I said on the Board, the Georgia Municipal Association Board, Board of Directors, that question was one I asked, and that we were trying to get the governor to do something to at least address that issue. However, he didn't address that issue, but we ourselves decided to do that, to address it. And here locally, we have done some things. The Coastal Community Health Services, that Prairie Park location on Bato Street, Shoppers Way location, there's no insurance necessary, and transportation is provided by Coastal Region Commission. And all they need to do is call 912-277-8028. The Homeless Coalition, also Homeless Services, they are, Safe Harbor is trying to provide hotel motel vouchers for the homeless, so at least they have some place to stay. We realize too that if they, if they're out here, you know, they have no place to go, you know, and they run into everybody else, social distancing, they need someplace to go. So we were proactive in doing that. Ms. Dominique Mack, she was a senior of the city early on. As you mentioned, the other folks, our assistant city manager, interim city manager, Ms. Tenet Myers as well. We also discussed that at our city council meeting with Commissioner Kason and Commissioner Harris leading the charge. So we are coordinating services for our homeless. We know that we have them here, and we're trying to do something about that, knowing that we would not like for them to pass on the virus either. Everybody is a citizen of Brunswick. We want to make sure they're all safe.
So that's, so let me get this straight. So you're saying that Coastal Community Health Services is offering COVID-19?
Screening, yes.
Screening, okay. Prairie Park, wow. And at their St. Shoppers Way location, they're actually testing at that location. And so, you know, just to let people know that screening and testing is two different things. But the fact that we have the ability here in our city to have screening and have testing and have transportation also that's provided by the CRC is pretty awesome. And like you said, you know, those, for homeless services, hotels and motel vouchers are being offered to individual families that is being provided by Safe Harbor. So it seems like the city is doing everything to make sure that everyone in the city is being protected, and that's kind of awesome.
Yes, we find that there are people who find themselves homeless in situations and not necessarily, it just happens to be. Right now, we have a lot of people who are out of a job. We have a lot of people who are, who lost a lot of income to the home. And although we know there's an order out that says that mortgages will be forgiven for a while, however, you know, sometimes people are not able to take advantage of that. And they may find themselves temporarily in a homeless situation. So therefore, Safe Harbor, I got to commend a lot of our nonprofits. They stepped up really, really, really big to help in this situation. And Safe Harbor is one of them. Salvation Army as well, they have stepped out there, opened up their chapel for additional beds for people as well. So that is really something here that's happening in our community, how we stick together.
Okay, so that is where, if, that's where maybe our homeless population, that's probably where they will be able to seek shelter at. Is that, is that the information that you've gotten?
Yes, yes.
Over at the Salvation Army Chapel on Union Street? Okay.
That is true.
Okay, okay. Something else. With all this talk of COVID-19 and, you know, trying to get benefits and all that is going on, I noticed that our Public Works is another group of, not only are they rock stars, but I really think that they are first responders also, right? They are working out in the midst of keeping our city growing, keeping our city going. Will the city continue full sanitation services, by the way?
Yes, we will. We got to continue that. We cannot let sanitation services lapse. We have a contract with Republic, and they are picking up our sanitation. And we got to continue to do that. Realizing too, even though this thing is almost like a hurricane, we were always prepared for a hurricane. We would get prepared, we sheltered down, we humped it down. But then, after a few days, you know, the hurricane passed. Well, this is with us for a while. And so therefore, we have to have our sanitation services. And I really applaud all the other utilities as well. Georgia Power is being very, very helpful in that they are giving assistance to people who can't pay their bills. Also, John Water Sewer is doing the same thing. We realize that we are in this thing together, and we would have to do some things that we would do differently than we did before. So I applaud them for doing that. But again, our sanitation services will continue as we move forward.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's a great thing that you and the commissioner is leading our city. We appreciate all the hard work and dedication that you guys have been able to give to us. Is there any other statement or is there any other questions or anything that you would like to pass on to the citizens of the city of Brunswick and the individuals that are listening in today?
Yes, thank you. I would like to say I'm very proud of the staff here at the city of Brunswick. I'm equally proud of the county commissioner and their staff because they have done so many things to help our whole community here. I want people to know that the city of Brunswick and Glen County, that we work together. We work together for the betterment of our whole community. And we like to see, want to make sure our community is safe. I also want to think, if I haven't already, to thank the teachers for the things they are doing, and realizing that doing things virtually online and keeping these kids also educated. A task for them to do. And I appreciate all the mothers, all the parents who have their kids at home and are teaching their kids at home and having to deal with the kids at home as they are. It's a different ballgame, as we say. However, we are up to the challenge, and I'm really proud of them, proud of you, and proud of the things that we do. Realizing that once we come out of this virus thing, we would probably do things a little differently than we did before. I don't know whether handshakes will come back again or not. It may and it may not. But I know that even though we want to shake hands, you know, we know we have to do some other type of way to acknowledge each other. But that's okay. That's okay. We want to, as we go through this virus thing, we want to make sure that we are practicing the discipline of social distancing. We are doing our thing, like washing our hands or practicing good hygiene. We want to make sure that we wear our masks. And also, we will make sure that we wear our gloves. The governor has relaxed, we're a mask out in public now. There's nothing to see someone with a mask on. And we know that we can get through this with our faith and our trust and our helping each other. As long as we do that, I think we can stem the tide and we'll be good. I think, as I speak with my fellow commissioners, that we together are here to stand, we stand tall to help you get through this as we get through it all together. And thank you, Mr. Steagle, for allowing me to say a couple of words to our citizens. And I hopefully, next time when I come on board, I will be able to expound some more additional information so as we move forward. And hopefully, we're praying that our economy is getting back, giving back slowly. But when it gets back, we'll be able to move forward and keep Brunswick the way it is, keep Brunswick a viable community, keep our county clean and safe. keep our county clean and and safe and and live in this great state of Georgia. I shall thank you so very much.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, very much for taking out your time to being able to speak with us today, um the cities of the and the citizens of Brunswick. Uh we appreciate it more than you will ever know. Uh for individuals that are still on the line, um which seems like we are able to in a little bit earlier than we thought. Um a couple of things I want everyone to know. This is being recorded, so please, I was able to send out my email address. And uh please email me if you would like a recording of it. This will be broadcasted also. And once again, please visit coastal dash strong dot com, coastal dash strong dot com. Um it is packed with all the information that you will possibly need for any of the COVID nineteen resources and benefits. It's a one-stop shop that was a collaborative effort from your economic development team here in the city of Brunswick um in Glen County. So please do not hesitate to give us a visit. Check us out. And we will do this again. And we're going to talk about things like summer sports. Uh we're gonna talk about um other topics that will come up. But we wanted to make sure tonight that you know that the mayor is working for your benefit. This mayor is working for your good. And we appreciate everyone that came out tonight. And please, everyone, be safe and social distance. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.